Okay. Could you please make the political meeting order at set number six and just ask if you can send your legislative signatures, please? Okay. Thank you for coming. Just a couple of things here and then two. This is very loud before we start it. Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on April 19th, April 20th, and April 27th, 2017, as detailed in the Friday mail. Move by Mr. Reed. Second by Mrs. O'Pagan. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's report for the month of March 2017 as detailed in the Friday mail. Move by Mrs. O'Pagan. Second by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. I am at this point in time to adjourn the meeting with Judge Superintendent Dr. Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Our students who are scholars and graduates. One of the things that I think we all would be very proud of is the well-rounded education that we offer to our students. But our students are just some of the most phenomenal young people that you've ever met. I find myself in meetings all the time saying if I sound like I'm bragging. I am. Our student athletes or scholar athletes, our artists, our artists and scholars, our musicians beyond being amazing, they're outstanding in class as well. So tonight's an opportunity for our community to celebrate the talents of our students, K through 12. I want to just sort of give you a couple logistics. We will call our students up one at a time and then we're going to ask our students to stay in the front because we'll do a room picture after all of the students in that category are called up. But we ask everybody to please remain for this portion of the program because it's nice for all of us to not involve the students. I will introduce the presenters and they'll come up one at a time. They'll take a picture and then after we're done with this portion, we're going to give a little bit of a break, have some snacks, and then come back for the regular portion of our meeting. I also want to point out and apologize for the program. The students who are listed under athletics, the information is incorrect and so we will give additional copies to the serving areas to distribute to those families. So I apologize for that. And so I'm going to ask members of the day to go to the front row and we will begin our program.
Sorry, Detective. Move by Dr. Dr. Stacey Rood.
So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Moore to come to the podium. He will introduce the spelling bee champions for our team. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Dr. Ken. Good evening, Board of Education. Parents, students, all of us. Very proud to be here this evening to present our spelling bee champions, CHAMPION, CHAMPION, CHAMPION. When I announce the name of the student, if the parents or guardians that they're here would stand in the audience and if the student would come up and accept the congratulations of the Board of Education and the tennis schools, I will appear. I start from Brookside School, Christian Smalling. From Lennox School, Shriya Gurupali Prashad. From Meadow School, Dave Achanu Achanu. From Plaza School, Maya Bayazan. I'm still Maya. I just heard someone say Mia, so I will say Mia Bayazan. And from Steele School, Brandon Kaminsky. And from Walton Middle School, Ashton Hummer. Congratulations to our spelling bee winners.
We'll be giving certificates after the ceremony is over. At this point, I would like to call Mr. Jimmy Kalmanis, our Director of the N L and of Form Hundred.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Bienvenue. I will be giving the awards for the National French Exam, the Grand concours, which takes place every year and it gives opportunities for all students in the United States that take French to compete against one another. And I'm very proud to say that Oakland has had a great showing this year. So our first set of awards are for the middle school level and our winners are all in the top 10% of both Nassau County and the United States. I just want to make sure that you understood that this is the top 10 of the entire United States. Gabriella Chikula. Bernardo Brizet. Kimberly Rafael. Sebastian Gabine. Brianna Esport. Danielle Palmer. Maria Jose Moreno Maecher. Congratulations to all our middle school winners. And now we will move on to our high school winners. Our first group of winners are in the top 10% of Nassau County and the United States. Abigail Sarai Rivera. Anne LaCorvette. Orange Arell. Xiaowire Gamael. Jimmie Lee Noel. Wendy Urbue. Dave Rosar. Malaya Press. Cameron Torres. Victoria Gaultier. Darcy Rayner. Jonathan LaRose. Congratulations to our high school winners. Malaya is in the top 9% of Nassau County and the top 15% in the United States.
It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. LaTrolla, the Principal of the High School.
Good evening, everyone. I am honored to have the opportunity to present to you this year's academic achievement awards. Our first group of awards is designated for the top 10 students of the class of 2017. This year's graduating class is made up of 425 students. The young men and women that I'm about to present to you embody what makes bold and brave. They have earned the top 10 highest weighted average in their class. I would ask our honorees and their families to come to the front when their names are called. I'm sorry, just the students I talk to. I'm giving a lot of people. The first person I would like to present to you has watched her fair share of true crime podcasts and documentaries. Before she heads off to the University of Pittsburgh, head to head, she will be spending two days observing the working of autopsies. I present to you our number 10, Jade Young. Number nine enjoys learning languages and is currently exploring German. Perhaps she can ask her fellow classmates at Boston University, excuse me, at Boston University, if they speak in C Deutsch. I present to you Grace Cannon. Number eight has a wide array of academic and musical accomplishments under her belt. She has also experienced a hurricane and a flood. Perhaps she can learn how to ride a bicycle while attending Stony Brook University. I present to you Karen Cannon. Our next honoree has visited Brazil four times and has admitted to being slightly obsessed with taking photographs of flowers in the rain. Louisa Damana, this year's number seven, will be attending Boston University in the fall. The young man who was ranked number six helped explain the conservation of annual momentum to me during a visit to a physics class session. He has also participated in Junior Olympics for track and field. I'm not sure which of these two things impresses me more since physics was my fourth subject in high school and I would rather have a group now with that anesthesia than run ten steps. Renzalider Polytechnic Institute will be welcoming Frank Molti in the fall. I am not sure how one learns Japanese by watching sub-titled television shows, but if anyone can do it, it's this year's number five. I am wondering if she will roller skate away across campus when she attends Cornell University's College of Arts and Sciences School. I present to you Clay Hammond. Does Jeanne Duffel jointed in your fingers contribute for a person's ability to create amazing pieces of visual art? Will this talented young person pursue her musical talents? She is in a brass quintet trio while at Adelphi University? I'm not sure, but maybe our this year's number four, Nurja Hunt, let us help. Many of you may not know this, but I was an English teacher before I became an administrator. One of my passions is reading and our next honoree shares that passion. In fact, she started a project whereby she has challenged herself to read 100 classic novels before she graduates from Wagner College. This year's number three is Jessica Vinsella. Our next honoree is not only academically strong and musically talented, she's also civic minded. She gives selflessly on her time participating in any number of fundraisers to support cancer awareness. Harvard University is fortunate to have Daniel Davis, the salutatorian of the class of 2017, into joining their ranks in the class of 2021. Daniel, there's an amazing bubble T-shirt not more from Market Square. It appears that this year's top 10 are interested in becoming college grads. Bolden High School's valedictorian is currently teaching herself reading while learning how to play clarinet. Suniti Fridomia's Blue Devils are in store for retreats when Sierra Boycheck joins them in September. Congratulations to the class of 2017's top 10. Your contributions, sorry, I'll make it really quick, I promise, your contributions to our learning community are noteworthy and there is no doubt in my mind that you will continue to excel as scholars and as human beings as you enter this next phase of your lives. Okay, I have a few more students to acknowledge. The AP program recognizes high school students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through AP courses and exams with the AP Scholars Award. Our next group of honorees have scored a grade three or higher on at least three full-year AP exams, which has earned them the designation of AP Scholar. Please join me in congratulating 2017's AP Scholars. Scholars, when I call your names, please go up on the stage. Moyasova Adeyemi. Michaela Barnett. Amira Bean. Aaron Chen. Jackson Khan. Lisa Damana. Gabrielle Jonas. Ellen Douglas. Margaret Ellie. Isaac Facy. Brian Leeser. Christina Jean Francois. Jalen Jordan. Hillary Carl Otto. Kate Maddlet. Elena Melendez. Madison Neill. Erica Brinkley. Alina Booker. Jade Chen. Yavini Norrie. Philip Orselli. Yavini Quanina. Alyssa Rayholt. Neil Leeser. Kristen Stellows. And Ari Finn. Mark Schmeichel. Laura Chola. Madison Walden. And the list of excellence continues. AP Scholar with Honor Designation is granted to those students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of those exams. Please join me in congratulating 2017's AP Scholars with honor. Oscar Ayala Cardozo. Maya Funtz. Jennifer Fordsmid. Leah Ham. Mutter Anton. Kathy King. Haley McRatten. Francis Molti. Simone Higery. Kimberly Robinson. Ben Timmott. Jessica Vinsella. Kiera Volker. And Sylvester Martin. And Susan Higery. Congratulations to AP Scholars with honors. Our final two students have been designated AP Honors Scholars with Distinction. These individuals have received an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Please join me in congratulating 2017's AP Scholars with Distinction. Danielle Davis. Julia Ladner. Anastasia Barra. For the record, that's the only time I had to be in the category of AP Scholars with Distinction. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Flotilla, the director of our fine performing arts program.
Karen, the only thing more awesome than being the director of music for the entire tradition, for these students in particular, is watching and getting to know those people. Karen's done an excellent job, they're all really great people, and she'll be very proud. Let's talk about Norjahad Khan. She is an Arts Supervisor Association Scholarship Award winner. She is a senior, and she's headed to Adelphi, and she represented Bolden also in the Arts Supervisor Association or County Art exhibit. Her work has also featured in Hetzer Museum art exhibit, and she's also an incredible French horn player, and who participates in several small ensembles. Norjahad, please. I'd like Norjahad, Danielle Davis, and Dalen Jor to come up, please. Danielle, as we heard earlier, is headed to Harvard. Dalen Jor is headed to, yes, University of Washington. Dalen has also represented us as an all-national student, which is something that doesn't come around very often, maybe once in eight or nine years that happens in this school. Thank you, excellent job. The Long Island Scottma Artist Awards Program recognizes students' judgment of that's the best on Long Island in both academic standing and arts. Students must represent the highest level of artist excellence and superior academic achievement with an unwed break point average of 90 or above. School arts teachers may nominate these students who meet these criteria. Students have to submit a performance report for the portfolio network and an essay. Final selections are made by a panel of artists and very distinguished educators. I'd like to call Allstate students from this year, Nicole Saint-Pierre. She's a senior, she's headed to SUNY to explore where she will study music. She's a very versatile freshman who participated in the New York State Summer School, New York State Summer School, Summer School of the Arts throughout her career at the high school, and has participated in various small ensembles, and has been in the concert choir and is a member of the Nassau Chamber of Corral. Malaya Press. She's a junior, a soprano, a trombone player, a future music major. She represented Bolden in the Allstate Women's Chorus this year, is a member of the Metropolitan Youth Orchestra Chorus. She is a member of the Wind Symphony Band and has had multiple roles throughout the years in the Bolden Playhouse Productions, most notably Pinocchio. But she never lies. Malaya has participated in the Westminster Choir College Solo Vocals Program and the Queens College Summer Music Institute. Philip Orselli. He is a senior, a future music major, he is headed to SUNY Purchase in the fall and is preparing to play a concerto with the Long Island Youth Orchestra after recently winning a concerto competition, which is an incredible competition. Philip Orselli attends the Tack School of Music Pre-College Division Program. Anna Batsford. She is a senior trumpet player, a soprano, and has been a dedicated student leader in many aspects of our music program. She is headed to SUNY Ferdomia where she will be studying music. Anna participates in several small ensembles and has been a crew member and leader in several Bolden Playhouse Productions, and is a member of the Nassau Summit Wind Symphony and is a principal trumpet player in the Long Island Youth Orchestra. Connor Tito, City College in New York City, and is a baritone saxophone player and guitar player. Connor is in the Jazz Band and Jazz Convo, is a prolific composer. Connor has also played in the PIP Orchestra of multiple Bolden Playhouse Productions. Sierra Volta Volchan. She is a junior, a chemist, a soprano, a composer who represented Bolden in the Allstate Mixed Chorus. Sierra is headed to Ferdomia as well, where she will study music. Sierra is in the concert choir, chamber orchestra, and several small ensembles. Sierra has composed works for her school ensembles, both large and small, and has been an instructor in the Bolden Friends of Music Summer enrichment program. Sierra has had roles in the Bolden Playhouse Production and has attended the Eastman Summer Institute of Composition. Aja Thomas. Aja is a junior, she's a choppa, a soprano, and a future leader in the chorus corps program. She has performed in several form ensembles and has multiple small ensembles under her belt as well. In addition, she participates, has participated in the PIP Orchestra and has attended the New York State Schools' Summer Music Program. Aja is also a member of the Metropolitan Youth Corral and has represented Bolden in the Walt Eastern ensemble.
It's my pleasure to call up Mr. Edgar Yuris.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all the wardwinds and parents. Very impressive. First, I just want to apologize, there are a couple hours in the back of the program. What I will do is mail out the record program for those parents and students tomorrow, so my apologies. First coach that I'd like to introduce up here is our varsity field hockey coach, Mr. Michael Hoover.
Hello, everyone. Gracias Nadia Elka. I have been Nadia Elka's field hockey coach for four years. When she began as a freshman on our team, she made an immediate impact to our program, earning world conference honors at the Men's Grand Prix. To describe to you what kind of player she has been over the years, I would use the words determination, persistence, athletic, focused, and driven. As a two-time Bull County player, Nadia led her team to the Nassau County Championship, first in the program since 1998. When she led us onto the field that night, I remember thinking to myself, not that I hoped Nadia makes a big play, but when is she going to make a big play? And I expected Nadia made big plays all night. I wish Nadia nothing but success, as she will be moving on, earning the Field Hockey Scholarship from Loyola College, where she will be majoring in violin. Danielle Speck. Danielle is a goal-oriented, dedicated, and extremely self-motivated individual. Her work ethic is outstanding. She is also an excellent baller, both on and off the field. Danielle is often the one I would use as an example when it comes time to perfecting technique and practice. Her field hockey skills are close to flaws. As an Old County midfielder and co-captain, Danielle also led us to the Nassau County Championship. You give her credit. That night, she won the game for Bolden with a goal in the second overtime against Massapee. So with all these wonderful traits and abilities that Danielle possesses, I am extremely happy that Danielle will be returning next year as a senior captain and five-year star, where we can hopefully pick up a little bit of love this year.
Our next coach coming up is our varsity football coach, Mr. Steve Cowan.
Can I have Jonathan DeBeek and Matt Washington? Okay, Matt Washington, you're first.
Matt. I could do it without him, trust me. All right, well, I've been practicing this my whole life. Matt Washington is a three-year varsity football player. In senior year, he was chosen as a captain by his teammates, and he earned all county honors. As every night when I present a student, I always like to give one anecdote story about them. Probably the best one is we're playing one of our big rivals, Eastside, and we call our first play of the game to 23 cents, which means nothing to anyone, except he turned around and ran 70 yards for a touchdown when we were very frustrated to take a game. So Matt Washington, a big type player.
Our next player is Jonathan DeBeek. Jonathan DeBeek is also a three-year star on our varsity football team. This is his second year, he earned all county honors. As you see up there, he was all Long Island, he was also all-state, he was also Golden Eleven. The Golden Eleven is for the top 11 scholar athletes in Nassau County, and Jonathan's number two. Jonathan also earned the, well, I said the Golden Eleven as well, and he also earned the MVP on the Nassau County All-Star Game. Jonathan earned a scholarship to Long Island L.I.D. poster next year, where he'll be attending, and obviously he'll be playing football as well. Jonathan DeBeek, congratulations.
Thank you, Coach. Our next coach is our varsity postgraduate coach, Mr. Paul Shaker.